Next item, item number two, under Public Works, consideration of a post-public hearing action related to the proposed Wynwood Special Service Area presented by both Bob Kiley, City Manager, and Kathryn Waldeck, Chairman of the Public Works Committee. Bob?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. The matter before you this evening, I think everybody can agree, has been stressful, challenging at times, and unfortunately controversial and confrontational at times. You've received a lot of correspondence from residents of the Wynwood subdivision expressing their deep concern and confusion over the city's policy regarding septic systems in the city. They have concerns regarding the motivation behind the policy to get everybody on city sewer, the methodology and approach taken by the city to date, and I think most importantly, the financial impact the matter will have on them individually and as a neighborhood. In response to the neighbors' concerns, and their feeling that we're rushing this decision and not fully listening to their concerns, staff will be recommending the passage of the resolution that's on your agenda this evening that would provide a 60-day pause so that we can all step back and focus on all sides of the issue, its complexity and challenges moving forward. First and foremost, this is a city code issue, a code that has been in place for many years, is wholly consistent with state and county laws, as well as many neighboring communities. If the city council so desires, the city attorney can review the existing city, county, and state legislation, and also in front of you, I believe, is a survey of other communities in the North Shore and what their laws are with respect to the same topic. The code only applies to a few properties within the community because a vast majority of the properties are currently served by city sanitary sewer. And Mike, if you could put up the first matrix, following the January 4th Public Works Committee, I asked staff to go back and review the list of properties that are currently on septic, and you'll see from the number, or from the map that's on the screen right now, that there are 85 total properties that currently are serviced by septic system and not on the city sanitary sewer system. The number of 34 that's in the pending line there, those are ones that are currently covered by SSAs. That means the sanitary sewer infrastructure is in place, but their septics have not failed or needed to be replaced up to this time, so those individual properties are continuing to use their existing septic system until such time as they will connect to the existing sanitary sewer. The third line down, the 23, those are parcels that are currently within the 500 feet that's outlined in the code, and the remaining number are those that are outside of the 500 feet and exist within the city of Lake Forest. So you can see that while this is clearly an important issue to the residents of Wynwood, that it only does affect a very small percentage of total residents now in the city of Lake Forest. The second issue really is an enforcement issue, and it's been said in some of the correspondence that you've received that Public Works Department is running herd over the city council and over the residents, and their zeal to try and get everybody connected to sanitary sewer. And I want to make it perfectly clear, because apparently despite my repeated efforts, I haven't been able to do so up to this point in time, is that the staff doesn't care. This is a policy of the city council, of the city of Lake Forest, and the staff will do whatever the city council tells us to do. We have up to this point in time enforced the policy, and we have been able to get a number of subdivisions and individual homeowners on to sanitary sewer, or like the pending areas that they have gone forward with their own SSA and allowed for the infrastructure to be put in place. The important thing I think to remember is that up until 10 years ago, the Wynwood subdivision was not out of compliance with your code, that the line, the sanitary sewer line that now exists northeast of their subdivision did not exist until about 10 years ago when St. James brought the line across Waukegan Road, and then a property south of St. James extended the line south. So those 28 lots were up until very recently, all in compliance, and in fact, today, there's only seven properties that are actually in that number of 23 that are within that 500 feet and subject to the city's code about compliance to sanitary sewer system. I think this is also an important issue of perspective, and what I mean by that is that the city council and the city generally take a very long-term, 20, 50, 100-year perspective, and we look at the community as a whole. So how does this code apply not just to the subdivision, but to all 85 lots that remain on septic in the city of Lake Forest? Understandably, the homeowner's perspective tends to be shorter-term and focused on their individual properties. And it's not to say one is better than the other, they're just different, and leads to unfortunately a point of conflict from time. And then finally, and probably most importantly to the neighbors, this is a financial issue. This is a lot of money for folks, and it will impact their lives for a number of years to come. I think the city council and the city staff certainly recognize that and understand that, and recognize that that financial impact comes in many different forms, both short and long-term. And I think what's gotten confused in this whole thing is the discussion on the SSA, because but for the city code that requires a connection, the SSA is not an issue, and the SSA is merely a financing tool that has been used in other areas of the city where neighborhoods have come on to sanitary sewer, that they have used as a way to finance the cost and spread those costs over a long period of time. Now, I recognize there's a lot of anxiety and confusion surrounding the topic, and I think that's understandable. This is a very complex and multifaceted public policy matter, and let's just sort of think about what some of those complexities or nuances are as we look at this going forward. You know, the residents of Wynwood have effectively asked you in their emails and at the Public Works Committee meetings and so forth to be exempt from the code and not to be required to connect to the city sanitary sewer. So that raises some public policy questions then for the city council. For example, do we amend the code and delete the language and thereby allow all of these 85 remaining lots to remain on septic system? Do we leave the code in place and just selectively enforce it, either when there's an emergency or a failed septic, or on a voluntary basis if people approach the city? If we don't amend the code, do we create, and I have to say, I stole this from Alderman Tack, a septic sanctuary subdivision, and basically identify this as a subdivision that we are going to exempt from the code and allow it to continue? And if we do that, then on what basis do we do that, and how do we justify that in this area when we didn't do it in any of the other lots? Or how do we address the 23 lots that aren't currently covered by, or within the 500 feet but are not connected to the system? So what do we do with the homeowner in Wynwood whose system is failing? And I think it's important to recognize that there is currently one property, and I think you've received correspondence from that individual who said that they're taking showers at the local rec center and so forth because they can't use a septic. And that's the only difficulty with stretching this process out, is that individual needs certainty, and they need to understand where they're going. And I think we have to respect the fact that they don't want to make a decision and then have the city council change their mind down the road. We unfortunately experienced that in Regency, where an individual came to us and said, you know, "I'm interested in coming on to the city sanitary sewer system." Unfortunately, the neighborhood wasn't ready, and the city wasn't ready at that point in time, and unfortunately, 18 months later, because of some other failures in the neighborhood, there was the SSA, and this individual now is paying for it and has a relatively new septic field. And I think for everybody's sake, staff, the residents, and the city council, we all need clarity and certainty in terms of what we're going to do going forward. The other question becomes, then, how do we proceed with, if we don't put an SSA in place, how do we proceed with the existing seven lots and the other 16 lots that are out there outside of Wynwood that are currently under the code? We have received some correspondence from some of the neighbors that are the, those seven lots within the Wynwood subdivision, saying, "What does this mean to me?" And again, that's, I think, that lack of certainty is, who, how do we go forward? If we choose to amend the language, how are we going to affect those 34 lots that are in the pending category? Because those people are paying $3,000, $3,500 a year right now for a sanitary sewer system based on the compliance and enforcement of the code up to this point in time. And I should emphasize the fact that in those respective special service areas, it wasn't 100% of the residents that wanted it. They just happened not to be the majority of the people who didn't want it, but there were definitely people in those areas that didn't feel that they wanted to connect to the city sanitary sewer system and therefore objected, but unfortunately, under Illinois law, their objections failed. The other issue that I think the Public Works Committee talked about, and I know some of you have been concerned about, is what do we do with the eight properties within the subdivision that are currently cross-connected with the storm sewer system? And unfortunately, we just learned today from Lake County that there happens to be another one, that more recently, the county permitted, which raises a whole nother issue about sort of the county's monitoring of this, and where do we go from there? And that sort of, you know, leads me to, if we are going to allow this, and this would be for all 85 lots, is what additional monitoring or reporting procedures are we going to be putting in place? And I think some of the residents had talked about that, and their willingness to be considered that if they're allowed to stay on, and I think one of the things we've learned is that the county's process is not as diligent as the city process would be. And so, much like we do for backflow connections that we have out there, where homeowners have to do annual inspections of the backflow systems, then we might do something like that in this place. You know, in the process of this, too, I think the staff stepped back from this and said, "What is wrong if we allowed this subdivision to remain on its own?" It's been said in this council chamber and meetings about our interest in diversity of housing, and if we allow the subdivision to stay on septic, is that a good thing or a bad thing with respect to diversity of housing? One thing that I think everybody needs to keep in mind, though, is that it does have an impact on future development of individual properties because of the existence of the septic tank or field on the property, and it limits what can be done. And I think to have a conversation about that is important, so everybody really understands what that does, because very candidly, what we experience is that people tend to approach the city to get on its sanitary sewer system, one, when your septic fails, or two, when you want to sell your house. And that's normally what happens, and maybe in some of those other subdivisions that have done an SSA, there've been a majority of the homeowners that have been interested in one or the other. And then I think the final thing that I would say that's out there that needs to be discussed, too, is what I would call this issue of full transparency, because in talking to some of the neighbors in the Wynwood subdivision, A, they weren't aware of the code language, B, some weren't aware that they even had septic when they bought their property, and what the complications and the issues were along that. So whatever we do going forward, I think we have to make sure we're very clear about what the city's position is, what it means to these 85 lots in the city of Lake Forest, both short-term and long-term, so that no one buying one of those properties down the road has any misunderstanding or stands before you five, 10, 20 years from now, and raises some of those issues. At the conclusion of the January 4th Public Works Committee meeting, Alderman Moreno requested that the staff explore some additional options for financing proposed improvements. As I mentioned earlier, I think the committee, the council, and the staff certainly comprehend the significant financial impact that this has on these 85 remaining lots. And to order to fully vet what those financial options are, for example, what if you extend the term of the debt from 20 to 40 years? What does that do in terms of making it more manageable? Can the financing be done in-house rather than going to a bank to bring the cost down? What would be some of those other things? I think we all need more time to consider these, as well as the issues that I've mentioned earlier, and that's why the staff is recommending passage of the resolution that's here this evening. I think the Wynwood neighbors are asking the city to sort of step back and reexamine its policy of applying this code universally across all properties in the city, and I don't think it's an unfair question for them to ask. But we must do so in a comprehensive and a thoughtful way, because I think the last thing we want to do is just react at the moment and then have a problem a year or six years down the road, because unfortunately, we do have 85 lots out there, and we want to make sure that we deal with all 85 of those properties in an equitable and fair manner. So with that, conclude my comments and turn it over to Alderman Waldeck.
And if I could interrupt a moment. The plan here would be, I'd like Alderman Waldeck to make some comments, and then to clarify, I'd like to call on City Attorney Phil Pini to help just kind of frame the resolution so that everyone's very clear on exactly what it is in front of the council this evening. So Alderman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would like to make a few comments. I will start off by saying that I do support this resolution, and I'd like to explain to all of you why. But let me first begin by saying this, to those of you here or who are listening from the Wynwood subdivision, we do hear you, and we are listening, and you have been very, very articulate in expressing your views and your concerns. We hear you at the meetings, we read your emails, and we may not respond to every single one of them, but trust me, we do read them, and we do hear you. This is a very, very difficult issue, and it's clearly an issue that we're struggling with and we're trying to find the answers to. I think this resolution is a good idea. I'm never one for extending time simply for the sake of delay, but I think in this situation, it serves a very reasonable purpose. One thing that concerns me a bit is that I think there's been a lot of new information that's been given to the residents and even to members of the Public Works Committee, and it is new information that's been given in response to questions, so I'm not faulting staff in any way for being responsive, but it is still new information that's being given during this time constraint, this time period that we're dealing with. I also think that there are aldermen who have questions and who want more information before they make their decision. I know that because some of them have reached out to me, some as recently as over the weekend or this morning, and that does not in any way mean that they weren't reading this packet and studying this issue and getting themselves up to speed. It simply means quite the opposite, that they have been thinking about it very, very carefully, and they're coming up with questions, and they feel that they need more information, and I think we need to provide it with them, them with it. I also am going to suggest to council that during this 60-day extension period, that we schedule, within the next 30 days, a special workshop for the entire city council and, of course, the public to devote solely to this issue. We can certainly talk about it tonight, but we have a full agenda, and there are time constraints. And we had a three-hour meeting on January 4th, and I think that we may very well have another lengthy meeting with the entire city council there. I think members of city council have differing opinions on this issue. They're all worthy opinions, they're all good opinions, and they're opinions that need to be aired. And I also think that the reason that a workshop is a good idea is, we've really, at this stage, moved past the Public Works Committee level when it comes to this issue, and we really need to deal with this issue now on a city council member, a city council member level. And I agree with Mr. Kiley completely that one piece of this is a policy. There is a policy issue, and policy issues are issues for city council. And I want to just take a moment to offer a small bit of historical perspective here. And one thing I do want to mention is that this ordinance that we're talking about was put in place probably over 30 years ago.
1976.
1976. There was at that time a city council and a mayor, not unlike this city council and this mayor, who looked at this issue, and they had a reason for doing it, and they were, they were good, it was not capricious, it was not arbitrary. Something, this issue arose, and there was a problem that they felt a need to address, and that's how this ordinance came about. And then in 1998, we looked at a document called our Comprehensive Plan, and there may be those of you in the audience that have never heard of it, but I can promise you it's something that at least I take very seriously, and it's a framework and a blueprint for our city. And in 1998, members of our community and city council and our plan commission took a look at this Comprehensive Plan, and they affirmed that they thought that it was a good goal and a laudable goal for our city to move off of septic and onto sanitary. And now we are faced with the question of whether this still is a good goal, and we are faced with, we are having, we are asked to reconsider this ordinance, to perhaps exempt people from it, to change or amend it, or to perhaps get rid of it altogether. Those are really big issues that have implications, not just for those of you that live on Wynwood, but for all of us and for future members of our community as well. And those are, that's an issue that needs to be addressed on the city council, on the city council level, and I know that we will hear thoughtful and differing opinions when we have that conversation. And I think that it moves down from there, that we start by looking at that policy, and then we absolutely have to address some of the questions and concerns that Mr. Kiley raised. What do we do about these cross-connections? That's a very valid question, and we need to discuss that as a group. What do we do about people on Regency who have already agreed to this SSA, some of who are paying assessments and have not yet connected? What obligations do we owe to those individuals as well? And quite frankly, we need to continue, I think, to have the discussion that we had towards the end of our January 4th meeting that was really sort of led by Alderman Moreno. Is there a way we can do this better? Is there a way that we can work with you folks and have this institute this SSA and do it in a way that's less burdensome for you? Those are all, a lot of the questions, right? And we need to, I think, set aside a meeting without the time constraints that we're restricted to in this meeting and answer, and answer those questions. And so, that's why I advocate, A, the extension, and B, the special workshop meeting. And I also think, as a corollary to that, that I'm asking that consideration of the code amendments be removed from tonight's agenda, because we may be changing this code, we may be eliminating this code, we may be exempting certain people from this code, and that workshop is the appropriate time to be having that discussion. So with that, I will, I see Alderman Moreno trying to catch my eye. I will turn it over to Mr. Mayor, you or Alderman Moreno.
Go ahead, Alderman.
I just want to say thank you to, certainly to Chairman Waldeck of the Public Works Committee, to city council for considering something off-agenda, and to the city, to Bob Kiley, City Manager, as well as to Mike Thomas and his crew, and to you, the residents. I want to say thank you because the easy solution here is to enforce the code. That's what we're here for, and that's not what we want to do. We want time, and that time is expressly so that we can dialogue more. So I want to thank everyone involved in this, because I realize I'm imposing on everyone's calendars longer, but I think it's important to do that because it's the right thing to do. So I just, I wanted to express my gratitude.
Thank you, Alderman. Could I ask Vic to frame a bit the resolution that's in front of us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You actually had an ordinance, or a resolution, rather, in your packet, and another one had come out this afternoon, and there's a couple of subtle differences that I wanted to make sure that you were aware of. When the original ordinance was prepared, it was thinking that we would just have an extension of time to think about it. As we vetted more what those thoughts might be and directions that this might go, we realized that we may not be looking at the same structure that we conducted the public hearing on originally. So the resolution that was presented to you today has a few specific differences. One, it's actually reopening the public hearing on the special service area and continuing it. The reason for that is it takes the clock completely out of the picture for the objection, and it then allows us to reevaluate whether, A, we continue with the special service area, B, whether it's the, under the parameters that were in the proposing ordinance or not, and C, better accommodates the workshop that Alderman Waldeck was talking about. Two, it calls specifically for that workshop, and then three, it does then call for a subsequent hearing at such time as we know what direction we're going to go. So it's a little more refined than that original resolution. The original resolution was not based on as thorough consideration of all of the options that might be bubbling up in the course of this workshop, and so that's the basis for the changes. The notion is the same, the implementation is a little more nuanced than what was originally presented to you.
Thank you, Vic, very much. So I think-
Mayor, could I have a question to clarify?
Alderman Bushman, go ahead.
On the comments you made, Victor, do I understand correctly that with the resolution, then, the earlier public hearing, which triggers this 60-day period, would become null and void, so to speak? We set a new one at some future date, which is not part of the resolution?
The date of the new one has not been set in the resolution. It's really going to allow us to see where the workshop goes. For example, one of the comments was, "Do we go more than a 20-year term for paying off the debt?" The proposing ordinance would set the parameters for the special service area, limited it to 20 years, so we wouldn't be able to work under that set of circumstances. So I think that the notion was, let's have the workshop, see where it leads us, and either we then reschedule the public hearing, or we start over again under a new set of parameters, and we don't know the answer to that yet, so we took this, the interim step that's being suggested here.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions for Vic?
Yes.
Or Bob, Jack?
Did we eliminate the April 1st date?
We took out any specific date because we wanted to make sure we had some flexibility. I think the timeline that Alderman Waldeck pointed out is still the desirable one, because we don't want to have this just hanging, but we did take it out.
Is there hardship language in this?
There is not. The hardship language was in the ordinance that was on the agenda packet. That's not going to go forward tonight, and it may never come back. I don't know.
That's all I needed to know.
Other questions for Vic? Bob? So this evening, the council then, it's our hope that we, as you've heard from Bob, from Kathy, and other members of the Public Works Committee, this is a terribly complicated issue, and we're very, very grateful to the residents who have really helped us as a council and as a staff kind of understand the issues that are kind of underlying the bigger issue. And so I think in sum, what we're asking tonight is, we'd like, as a council, to have a dedicated workshop forum focused solely on this topic, focused solely not just on the Wynwood question, but I think to solve the Wynwood question, we need to solve some bigger issues, and we need to answer and ask some other questions that as Bob has really done a nice job of outlining. So what I would ask, I have three appearance slips tonight. I'm always happy to let someone come up and speak. Tonight, I would give you three minutes, because as Kathy said, we do have an incredibly full agenda. If you have something new, or if you have something that has not been surfaced or not been presented to the council or to staff before, we would be delighted to hear it. If not, I would ask you to consider whether or not you want to come up and hold your comments until the workshop. You have the entire council here this evening. We're going to poll the council when we're done this evening to find a date sooner than 30 days. We need to get it done more quickly than 30 days. To schedule the workshop, and we'll let you know as soon as we schedule that meeting and we can move forward. So I would ask Andrew Tuzman, would you like to come up? And sir, I'll give you three minutes. I'm sorry, Twyman, I apologize.
It's okay. Handwriting wasn't great. You can just indulge me. First, I'd like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak, you know, in an attempt to kind of enlighten you to some of the issues that are facing the residents of Wynwood. Again with, I'd like to explain and address the enormous costs that will be imposed if such a project is foisted upon the current homeowners of the Wynwood neighborhood. I think it's also important to understand that there are not, these are not just numbers, they represent a financial hardship that in some cases would simply be too high to realistically justify in their current form. These also would create a chilling effect, a cataclysmic downward spiral to our currently beautiful neighborhood. Now, part of my statement is going to be related to the current costs for the public portion, I'm going to just get rid of that, because I know I'm limited on my time, and you don't want old information. want old information. So it's incumbent upon us to consider the costs that are to be individually shouldered by each homeowner, independent of the public process. These alternate costs are, in fact, in most cases, far in excess of the initial costs. They would include landscaping, repair, and replacement. This cost would be up to and in excess of $10,000 per home, depending on the work that was done. We would have to then consider hookup. This, in many cases, would involve installing lift stations and very long runs to the new sewer installation. The estimates for this cost, in some cases, would be in excess of $150,000 per home in our neighborhood, depending on the distance in the sewer line, to the sewer line and the topography of the land in which the home sits. The last portion of the cost would come in the event that the homeowner needs to completely replumb their homes. Understand that in many cases, the homes on Wynwood have their plumbing exit, the rear of their home, to drain to their current working septic systems. This is a very common aspect of the homes in our neighborhood, and will require complete repiping in order to be able to reach the proposed sewer line. This cost would be in the range of $10,000 to $20,000 per home. The overall cost, combined with the public portion, could exceed a whopping $255,000 per home in our subdivision. In some cases, in fact, in many cases in our subdivision, this would represent more than half the current home's value. Now, I would ask you, try to imagine you're a young family that decided to move to our community in the hopes of providing a great environment to raise your children and own a nice home. You love the schools, our beautiful beach, and of course, Market Square. You worked hard, and you saved in order to be able to purchase a property in our rarefied community. A couple of years go by, and now you see that the property values have diminished greatly, and Market Square has lost, unfortunately, many of its stores. You also see that the house that you now live in is worth less than you owe the bank. You most likely feel that it's okay, because despite the current value, you are still providing your family with the ability to live in our wonderful city. And as we all know, values can always come back. So you dutifully pay your taxes, and you pay the mortgage on your home, and you repair and maintain your home, despite the decrease in value.
Mr. Twyman, I'm going to ask you to close, please conclude your remarks.
Wow, okay. I guess I would just say, you really need to think this through very carefully. Look at the other neighborhoods where this was deemed a success. That would be Knollwood and the Regency Neighborhood. Those homes, if you drive down those streets, are in varying states of disrepair and abandonment. If that's what you want for our neighborhood, that's what we'll end up with. I would encourage you to read my statement that I will email to all members of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, I don't think there's anything we heard tonight that we hadn't heard before. Again, you're welcome to speak if you'd like to speak. Next person who's submitted a slip, Maxim Gorlick. Would you like to come up, or would you like to pass? Pass?
I can delay.
Great, thank you very much. Zachary Elvin?
I will allow Andrew's comments to stand. The only thing I wanted to say tonight was thank you to the members of the council for acknowledging the complications and difficulties that we've had. It's been a difficult and long road to be heard, but I do appreciate you honoring your word, and I appreciate you setting aside the time to hear us out on this issue. I would like to correct maybe a couple of things that I heard tonight. One is about the cross-connections. I happen to live in a home that does have what is termed a cross-connection. It is, in fact, the design of the system. It is regularly maintained by a, by Grove Concrete, and also tested twice a year, as well as a permit has been issued by the Lake County, the whatever group handles that. It's a significant cost for us to do that. To be asked to disconnect a system that is actually approved by that county would be a hardship in my mind, especially if, at the end of the day, we end up choosing or installing a public sanitary sewer. I understand there are different types of systems. Most of those systems are, in fact, designed to keep anything out of the storm sewer, and we should also consider that. Other than that, I conclude my comments, and thank you for your understanding. Look forward to discussing in more detail and hopefully finding some alternatives to what we're doing, or perhaps even skipping the project altogether. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much. Again, I'm, we have, as Alderman Waldeck mentioned, there's not a member of this council that's not read every single email we've gotten and every piece of communication that we and the staff have received. So we're much more informed and much more prepared to tackle this subject than we were even 30 days ago. And I think we're very eager to tackle it to kind of not only find a resolution for the residents of Wynwood, but certainly for answering some of the bigger questions that we have. So that being said, unless there's other questions that the council may have?
I have one comment, Mr. Mayor. Again, as you recognize, I'm new to the council, but I did take the time beginning of the month to attend your January 4th meeting. I sat in the back row. It's a great place to observe, and I've continued to learn more and more. And I think the comments tonight are very apropos of all the issues we have here. The one thing I'd like to add, I don't think has been said tonight, is before this public forum, I would really encourage the residents to meet among themselves, to see if they can work through, be smarter than us, come up with a solution to the various issues that we've raised here. I know you have those issues. We've identified some issues. And I would assume that Bob Kylie and his staff will be available to talk about specifics, whether it be cross-connects, or this issue, or that issue. But again, the residents have been very vocal on this, very emotional. Let's take the emotions out of it, and let's deal with the issues here. And again, I would encourage you to work among yourselves, so when you come to this public forum, maybe you'll have some solutions that will help the council reach the right policies here.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else? If not, I would ask the council for a motion to approve the resolution in front of us related to the proposed Wynwood SSA and the extension. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Bydler?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Ryzenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
AKA, Sarah Nae, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Bob?
The only question is, do you want to, while you're all gathered here, try and find a date? I think I emailed out some possible dates. I heard back from a couple of you already on what dates work or not. Or would you rather that I just send you an email tomorrow and we look at what works?
I'm going to make a suggestion. Right after this meeting, let's poll the group, if everyone would just stay for a moment. And we'll put our heads together, and then we can very quickly disperse and disseminate the meeting date. Perfect. Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'm going to give anybody in Wynwood that would like to not be subjected to the balance of the council meeting to feel free to sneak out if you'd like. And thank you very much for coming. Next item on the agenda, consideration of an ordinance amending the City of Lake Forest Code, Section 150.384, Sewage and Sewage Disposal. Asking to waive first reading and grant final approval. I know, Alderman Waldeck, you mentioned you'd like to remove this item from the agenda this evening.
I would.
Kathy, can you clarify? I thought this was more language cleanup than it was anything.
That's later.
Oh, different one. Got it. Okay. Unless someone on the council would feel differently, I'm happy to waive discussion on this tonight and postpone for future meeting.
Sounds like a good idea to make.